Okay. At this time, a call to order, the Tuesday, November 17th, 2015, regular meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask everyone to take a minute of silence to reflect and pray in your own way. We could please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, Latin for the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unagakh, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Smith, there are no adjustments to the agenda. Is that correct?
Actually, under unfinished business, just would like to mention the, or add the inmate reduction committee report.
That's correct. Thank you. Let me move on to appointments before the board. We have our Finance Director, Ms. Susan Robertson, for a report on the audit.
Thank you. Tonight, we have with us Cassie Wilson, CPA from Martin Starnson Associates. Cassie was the managing auditor for this June 30, 2015, reporting period, and she's here to present the highlights to you. The printed document is not available tonight. We are waiting until we get the rest of the compliance section complete, but the financial part is complete, and I'll let her present. I also want to say thanks to Deb Alford, Assistant Finance Officer. She takes the lead role in getting us through the audit process, and as in years past, she's done a phenomenal job in pulling it all together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Cassie Wilson. I am with Martin Starnson Associates, and I'll go over a brief summary of the audit highlights. We issued an unmodified opinion. That is a clean report, which is the highest opinion that we can give for the county. And again, this is for physical year, June 30th, 2015. There was a new GASP standard implemented during the year, which was GASP 68. So when you do look at the financial statements, once you have those hard copies, you will notice there are some differences, some number adjustments that are in there, and that's all related to GASP 68 that was implemented, and that was across the state for all of those units that participate in the state retirement plan. So it did affect net position, but you'll see that information once you get the financials to look at. I do want to take a moment to thank the finance staff for their cooperation, for their hard work in getting everything together, prepared for us, the communication and the efficiency of getting things done in a timely manner. We really appreciate that. It makes our job a lot easier when we have great finance staff to work with. The total fund balance for the general fund ended at $65,528,028. That was a slight decrease of $852,102. There was a restatement to the 2014 balance for $675,000. That was due to a change in presentation of the long-term notes receivable, which was issued by the LGC presentation requirements for this physical year. This slide offers information on your fund balance classifications. As you can see, there are five classifications. There's non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. This has not changed, but it did change a few years back. The fund balance position for the general fund, with a total fund balance of $65,528,028, taking in and factoring the non-spendable and the stabilization by state statute numbers that are required to be calculated, the available fund balance ends at $46,962,934. This was a decrease in available fund balance from physical year 2014. There was a decrease of the $1,399,603. This is the calculation that is utilized as a basis from the LGC for comparing units to each other based on their population size. This is the information that they look at, and this is the calculation required by them. The available fund balance as a percent of the general fund expenditures was 27%, and your unassigned percent of general fund expenditures was 22%. This calculation does include transfers out for the general fund. And then available fund balance, this percentage is also what the LGC focuses on and gives high importance on. However, management may find it more useful to look at this unassigned percentage of their fund balance, and that gives them more information based on taking out the restricted, the committed, and the assigned fund balances that are factored in. The general fund summary for revenues, the revenues ended at $233,150,365. Expenditures ended at $234,2,467. These amounts include other sources and uses for both revenues and expenditures. The county had an increase in the general fund revenues and expenditures for the physical year 2015. The refunding of the debt is that the largest factor in that increase from 2014 to 2015. Those numbers added in and factored in for the refunding of that inflate the 2015 numbers, but it's important to take that into consideration and how that affected the total. For your general fund revenues, property taxes were 60%. Other taxes and license were 20%. Federal and state grants were 11%, and other revenues were 9%. There was about a 2% shift from property taxes to other taxes and license based on the percentages that were reported for physical year 2014. So you had a slight change there, but overall, your percentages stayed pretty comparable for 2015.
Can you break out the sales tax?
Yeah, I have another slide that talks more about other taxes and license, which includes the local option sales tax. The ad valorem taxes specifically ended at $104,626,291. That amount is pretty comparable to the prior year with only an increase of about $651,000. For other taxes and license, that ended at $33,637,169. The majority of this category is local option sales tax. There was over a $3 million increase from the prior year. The local option sales tax increased 9.5% from the prior year when looking at your 2015 ending numbers. Any other questions on the sales tax? Restricted intergovernmental ended at $18,681,677. This is made up of federal and state grants, and this is comparable with the prior year with only a slight increase of around $616,000. For the expenditures in the general fund, public safety was 20%. Other expenditures were 13%. Debt service, 17%. Education, 31%. And human services was 19%. Other expenditures in that category include general government, transportation, economic development, and cultural and recreation, and these percentages are comparable to the prior year with only a 1% or less shift between the categories. For education, the total expenditures for the physical year 2015 was $49,329,759, which is an increase of over $2 million. For debt service, the total was $26,848,257, was a decrease of around $510,000, and a significant portion of the debt service is related to school, so it's for education. Human services totaled $31,298,925. Expenditures are comparable with the prior year with only a $467,000 increase. The majority of the funding and for these expenditures do come from your federal and state grants, a large portion of it does. There's only a small part that does not. Public safety ended at $32,196,554. This was an increase of $951,000 in the current year. Solid waste fund, the net operating income ended at $2,716,427. Depreciation expense was $1,160,155. Total net position, $36,608,194. Unrestricted net position, $12,999,726. And the cash flow provided by operations was $4,033,783. The new GASP standard, which was implemented and effective for the physical year 2015, did affect the net position for the enterprise funds as well. So it does affect your ending net position in that fund. For EMS, the net operating income ended at $578,133. Depreciation expense at $70,866 for the year. Total net position, $1,751,138. And unrestricted net position ended at $1,455,540. Cash flow provided by operations in this fund, $638,527. Are there any questions on any of the information or the audit?
Any questions?
The GASP changes is related to solid waste. Is that related to depreciation of equipment, or can you speak specifically as to what changes?
GASP 68 is related to the state retirement. So employees that are allocated and specific to that fund, a portion that's related to them has to be allocated to that fund. And so when we looked at the breakdown, same thing as your OPEB. So when you break that information down and you look at the employees specifically for that fund, the same allocation applies for the state retirement. And so that percentage was allocated that affected that fund specifically.
Are there any more of those regulations in the future that we can expect? I mean, some of them make sense, such as that one, but I still have some heartburn over this idea of why government's supposed to depreciate equipment when we don't follow income tax return, but that's my personal problem, I guess. Are there any other regulations?
There's always a chance to have some that will be effective that may not make the most sense to us, but there are several that they have and that they are working on that is in draft form, but at this time, there's none for us to speak of specifically that may affect you, but they're always working on something, so.
Are all these changes, do they originate with the state or the federal government?
This was related specifically to having each unit in North Carolina record their portion of the state plan and that liability that may occur or that will occur in the future. And so what they were trying to do with this specific standard was allocate each unit's portion out, and so they shared in that and presented that in their financial statements.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You mentioned that the state would be crunching numbers and be doing some comparative analysis. Where do we stand as far as, have we done a comparative analysis vis-à-vis other counties of like size or expenditures in terms of where we rack and stack?
There is actually a form, the AFIR, that's completed by the Finance Department, and that information is put onto the agency's website, and you can use that to search for your population group, and that gives you more of a definitive answer of where you're at within your population group. But as far as what your county needs, that kind of outweighs where we really, we don't rank you as your auditors as to where you are with your peers. LGC focuses on that, and they use the AFIR process and those numbers that will be prepared, and that's something that the finance staff can print reports off for you and pie charts and plenty of graphs for you to see within your population group where you fall.
Well, in terms of where we rank relative to other counties in terms of our finance departments and our other departments' fiduciary duty to the taxpayer and accounting for funds and all, do you have a sense of where we fall out? I mean, there are some counties clearly that may have some serious issues in terms of accounting, and that's why we have an audit. But I'm just curious as to whether or not, where we sort of rank in that, because it ought to be pretty much at the top of the heap, I should think.
From the procedures that we completed and our audit process, you can definitely see that you have a very sophisticated finance staff and county, and you do take into consideration all the factors, but as far as comparing you to others, that's not really something I can speak to.
Mr. Chairman, the NCAA puts out an analysis, I believe it's the NCAA that puts out an analysis every year, and doesn't necessarily rank counties if I remember right, but it does give a very comprehensive overview of a lot of the information that's been presented tonight, and when the next one comes out, I'll make sure to get it to you, because it's very good information in seeing how we do stack up.
I was going to speak to that just a second ago, and the manager took the words out of my mouth. If you want to know where a county ranks, just go to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners website, and they have a budget and tax survey chart. And you can arrange it in order of where you rank in school funding or where you rank in tax base per capita, but they have a column, and you can create your own ranking. And every time you give a ranking of the counties, somebody's going to dispute it. So I just encourage folks, just go on there and look, and contrary to what people say, it'll surprise you how favorably we compare in a number of areas, particularly in educational spending as compared to other counties.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Wilson, we appreciate your staff working in close coordination and collaboration with our finance department. I want to really, on behalf of the entire board, thank all of you for this annual effort of assurance to the county taxpayer that funds are not only wisely spent, I think, through our budgeting process, but are accounted for appropriately, and that our systems are in place to ensure that there are no lost dollars and unaccounted-for funds along the way. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it again.
Thank you.
We'll now move to Goodwill Industries as a presentation of services in Iredell County. I believe Malvee and Sean White?
Yes, that is correct. I'm Malvee, and I'm the Workforce Development District Director for this area, and...
I'm Sean White, the Hickory District Employment Manager for Stateville.
And I wanted to thank you as a board for giving us an opportunity to come out and share what we do. In October, we hit our 10-year anniversary, so we've been here in Iredell County for about 10 years. Since the 10 years, we've changed a lot of our services, so we wanted to take this opportunity and kind of share with you all of the various different services that we do have. I know when a lot of people hear about Goodwill, they're more familiar with the Goodwill stores, donating, but they aren't really sure where the dollars go or what it goes to do, and I wanted to go ahead and share that with you guys. In Iredell County, we do provide a whole list of services. It is helping people to get employed. Earlier, I had the pamphlets passed out to you guys that pertains to some of the information of the various different services we provide, and one of it is Career Connections, and it is helping people to gain employment. We do this by helping people, by teaching and training people to write resumes, how to interview, how to prepare for a job, how to understand the workings and social cues while being on the job. And so it is from the beginning phase all the way to the ending phase. This is a free service to anybody who needs this service, so if they come in wanting to find employment, we provide that service to them. All of the dollars from our retail operation comes to support that, or I shouldn't say that, 90 cents of every dollar out of our retail operation comes to support those services. Another one of our services, Project Reentry, it is helping ex-offenders to reenter the community. Whether we like it or not, they are going to return here to home, and so we have a pre- and post-release type of program. So we start working with them while they're inside the prisons, getting ready to be released. Once they are released, we do continue to work with them in the community. It's to reduce recidivism. We work with probation and parole to do this. A lot of the services that I will talk about tonight, it is in partnership with a lot of the community organizations to get some of this mission accomplished. Another one is ability services. Ability services is to help people with disabilities find employment or to be as independent as possible and a contributing member to our community. We do it through partnerships with Department of Vocational Rehab and/or other disability services and organizations out there. Another one of our services is youth services, and we do it actually through Crosby Scholars. Crosby Scholars helps students in middle school and high school become prepared for college, to enter college or to choose a field to enter in regards to secondary education. So we start with them very young. We start helping, guide them, looking for resources so that they can enter that second part of their life.
And what you're also looking at is, we all know, it's just not the GPA that helps you find the college that you're looking for. Crosby Scholars takes a holistic approach when they're looking to help get folks entered into college. They help them with their volunteer time. They help them with understanding the resources that are out in the community. They have a website that you can go to, and the students can find out what exactly are the scholarships that are out there, and how do you apply for those things. And so they're giving them a continuous education to understand, not only do you have to have an interest in a field, but if you're going to pursue that dream, what college do you go to, and what is the way that you maximize the benefit of that?
And then another one is skills training. As we are aware, a lot of the businesses that are coming to the area are looking for folks with further training, further skilling, further tooling. So we do partner with Mitchell Community College in providing some of these training or retooling to some of the clients who comes in to utilize some of these services. We do have a CNA class right there in our facility and also other allied health training classes, which is provided by Mitchell Community College. There are other services such as self-funded ability services. That's something where Goodwill gives other training tools to people with disabilities, such as anywhere from learning to open a banking account to learning how to utilize some of the other services that are in the community, independent living skills. So we do all of that, and that pretty much covers all the services that we were doing here in Iredell County. That has been a huge change from when we first started here with just strictly working with people with disabilities, so we've diversified the amount of services that we offer. I also want to share that all of the services that I've talked about tonight, anybody who does come in, it is at no cost. Once again, our retail operation does come and fund that, and so just wanted to share that and give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions if you have any.
I really am impressed with the range of services that you have expanded into in terms of general workforce development. I think that's spot on, and I'm curious, do you have some numbers to share as far as the number of clients in Iredell County that you've served?
Absolutely.
In terms of preparing them or actually helping them get employment?
Yes, sir. With Career Connections alone, we've served over 1,413 people. Out of that, we've seen over 216 gain employment. I just did my retention rate this afternoon, and we were looking at from the 30 to the 365 retention rate, we've seen people with, stay in their jobs, at least 106 of those people, and out of the 106 of those, we've had more in the 365 range. So we're seeing a very much higher percentage in that area. As far as abilities program, we served over 161 clients out of those people. Forty-two were able to gain full employment. With the Project Reentry, we had 108 that we had served. Out of the 108, we had over 52 that were employed in the community as well. And with the operation Good Jobs, working with our veterans, and this is our first year, so we're still getting the word out, we served 65 clients. Out of the 65 clients, we had 42 of those clients that were also able to gain employment.
And let me also share with these numbers, for the other consumers that we have served, they may be in different stages of getting to that point of employment. So if someone comes in and, let's say, they need retooling, or they need to learn how to use some of the more advanced computer programs, they may still be in those stages, and so that's why eventually they will get to the point where they're ready to enter employment and stay in employment.
What are the primary sources of referrals into your programs? I guess a few just walk in the door, I suppose, but most must be referred by... I just did my retention rate this afternoon, and we were looking at from the 30 to, from the 30 to the 365 retention rate. We've seen people with, stay in their jobs, at least 106 of those people. And out of the 106 of those, we've had more in the 365 range. So, we're seeing a very much higher percentage in that area. As far as abilities program, we served over 161 clients out of those people. Forty-two were able to gain full employment. With the Project Reentry, we had 108 that we had served. Out of the 108, we had over 52 that were employed in the community as well. And with the operation Good Jobs, working with our veterans, and this is our first year, so we're still getting the word out. We served 65 clients. Out of the 65 clients, we had 42 of those clients that were also able to gain employment.
And let me also share with these numbers, for the other consumers that we have served, they may be in different stages of getting to that point of employment. So, if someone comes in and, let's say they need retooling, or they need to learn how to use some of the more advanced computer programs, they may still be in those stages. And so, that's why eventually they will get to the point where they're ready to enter employment and stay in employment.
What is, what are the primary sources of referrals into your programs? I guess a few just walk in the door, I suppose, but most must be referred by, I don't know, Employment Security Commission or Mitchell or
Yes, also vocational rehabilitation, Department of Social Services with the Workforce Program. We have clients from there. From mental health, we have, we have clients that are referred to the abilities program, the one that's self-funded, where we're going to work on the very basics to help, help clients to get even to a point where you're looking at, okay, now that I have a foundation of what I'm doing, then I can start understanding how to interview, how to create a resume, how do I even start looking for a job? And so, from the, from the community, we have many partners that we have branched out with and who make referrals.
Yep, but I also want to share, one of the biggest sources of referrals has actually been word of mouth.
Absolutely.
For a lot of, a lot of our community leaders, such as you guys, who become aware of it and say, hey, you know, there's this resource out there, reach out to it. We've had a lot of our referrals coming through that way. You know, ex-person told me about this and they're telling me, you guys aren't charging to help me, how can I get help? And then from there, it's, it's come on in, we'll see what we can do, where the starting areas and what you need to do next, how can we help you get to that next level?
Do you have a breakout generally as far as age, gender of clients that you help?
I don't have that with me, but I know that recent, the last numbers that we took a look at, it ranged anywhere from 16 all the way up to 70s, just because of the wide series of programs that we have, because we have, once again, as I said before, youth programs ranging all the way from Career Connections to Veterans Services. And so, that range is going to vary, but I can give you more specifics on that in an email or something.
I think it would be important to understand the nature of your clients, you know, is there, you know, a statistically significant trend in a particular age group that we're looking at or that you're seeing? Just so we can get a better understanding of who needs jobs out there and how they can be successful in
Yeah, I can
達成 their objectives. I'm really very impressed with
Yeah, I can definitely get that information out.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for your time.
Yes, we definitely appreciate it.
Very much, Mr. View and Mr. White, for everything you do and just, this is making a big difference. Thank you. We'll now move to a presentation of the annual report from Partners Behavioral Health Management and Mr. Rhett Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Rhett Melton, the CEO of Partners Behavioral Health Management, and I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes of time on your agenda. We did pass out before the meeting a copy of Partners' annual report. It just, has just come out over the last couple of weeks. So, I definitely hope that you take a few minutes sometime over the coming days or weeks and review that, because it does highlight a lot of the activities of Partners that we, and accomplishments that we've had over the last year. I just wanted to also just kind of summarize for you some of those activities and some of the things that we've been involved with. And just to start by reflecting back, if you will, you remember in 2012, the Board of Commissioners of Iredell County, along with seven other Boards of Commissioners, approved the creation of Partners. At the time, Crossroads Behavioral Health was the Iredell County Behavioral Health Services Provider, Pathways was in the southern area, and Mental Health Partners was in the more western area for us. So, the Boards of Commissioners in July of 2000, or June of 2012, approved the merger of those three organizations and Partners was formed. One of the things that we did that for is that we could take advantage of contracting with the state to manage the Medicaid behavioral health services here at the local level. And that's what we've accomplished. When, when, when we did that, you'll recall that the reason the state was pushing for that is the state budget for Medicaid was really out of control. And, and the state needed to get control of Medicaid spending, and one way to do that was to enter into contracts with us at the local level to capitate the funding. So, what the state did is looked to see, you know, how much was the state spending on behavioral healthcare across the eight counties that, that formed Partners? And to say, you know, let's, let's look at the trend, let's look at the spending, let's look at the history of expenditures, and push that down to the local level. And by doing that, we think they can do it better. We think that they can manage it more efficiently than we're doing at the state. So, we're going to not give them as much money as we used to spend. So, they took savings off the top, if you will, and I mention that because I want to come back to that shortly with another point that I hope that we can get the Commissioner's support for. But they took the savings off the top and gave us the net difference. First year, that was about $8 million difference. So, the state realized savings off the top of about $8 million, if you, if you're looking at the same numbers of consumers. Of course, the Medicaid, as well as the general population, has continued to grow, but if you're looking at the same number of individuals, about $8 million was saved the first year. This year, the state's saving about $31 million through this process. Again, having the savings off the top at the state level before they give us the money to manage, and we're at risk for managing the money. In other words, they give us the amount of money that they give to us, and we're responsible for managing the services at the local level. Medicaid is, is an entitlement program. So, when, when we spent the money that they give to us, we can't say, we're out of money, we're done. We have to fill that need. So, that's the at-risk nature of our contract.
Was that $31 million saved statewide?
That's just for Partners.
Just for Partners.
Just for Partners. And so, what the, what the intent was, and again, I'll come back to this shortly, but the intent was is to say, okay, we're going to give you the net amount, and you have to fill all the needs in your local community, and that's, that's your money to spend. And then whatever spending that you save, so if you don't spend all that we give you, you get to reinvest that into your local communities to expand services, to partner with agencies like you just heard about, to say, how can we better serve those in need in our local communities? So, that was, that was the plan. So, as, as we've gone through the last year, and you'll see this in the annual report, last year, Partners served 28,355 Medicaid recipients over the, over the course of the 12 months across the eight counties. In addition to that, so we manage the Medicaid money, and we also manage some state grants that they give to us to serve those that don't have any other funding. And so, in addition to the 28,355 consumers, we served 11,234 indigent consumers. So, you have high 30,000 in terms of the total number that we serve across the eight counties. And when I say that we serve that, you'll remember that, that we, Partners, don't actually provide the services. We contract with local organizations to deliver the care. That's, we're a managed care company in that regard. We contract currently with 272 agencies, the ones that you might think of, Barium Springs Industries, Daymark Services, those types of large organizations. We contract with another 125, what we refer to as license-independent practitioners. You'll think of those as just somebody that might have an office here downtown, and they're a psychologist, and they see people kind of on a fee-for-service basis. We contract with 125 of those. And then we contract with 34 hospitals. Obviously, not all those are in our eight counties, but if somebody from Iredell County is at the beach and they need care, behavioral healthcare, we contract with hospitals in Wilmington, or if they're in the mountains, we'll contract with hospitals. Wherever the consumers are, we'll, we'll have their needs met where they are, if they're out of, out of our catchment area. So, as, as we look, again, when I saw, and I talk about, and you read in there about the number served, just remember those, those are served by our contract agencies that we partner and provide contracts to. So, if you look at the course of the last year, one of the things that Partners, you'll see in the annual report, Partners has been very successful. There's a lot of individual consumer success stories that are written in the annual report, and a lot of agency stories about the numbers of people that we've been able to be successful with. The state, you know, there's eight of us that do what we do across the state. Partners has an excellent reputation, and I, and I hope that the Commissioners are proud of that as you, as you hear about Partners, because we're well-regarded across the state amongst our eight. We've done a lot of good things and get a lot of positive recognition. We are, we are monitored to death in terms of state organizations. They contract out national organizations to come in and review those, and we consistently receive high marks on each one of those reviews. One of the things that we are proud of is, is our trade organization is called the North County Council of Community Programs. And so, every year, they have a gathering in December, and they recognize what they call Programs of Excellence. So, a local initiatives that are going on, partnerships that have happened in the communities, you submit nominations for things that are going well in your local communities, and there's eight or so different awards that they give out. And we just recently found out two weeks ago that we'll be receiving two of those eight awards, Partners will, at the conference next month. So, again, I think that speaks highly of the quality of activity that we have going on in our local communities. One of the things that I know, when I talk about the reinvestment of money, one of the things that Partners is doing here in Iredell County, a significant effort of ours, is to, with those 200 and some odd licensed, or 125 license-independent practitioners and the agencies and the hospitals that I talked about earlier, one of the things that's hard for people in the county is to know where to go when they have need. If they're an adult, if they're a child, if they have a developmental disability, if they're, if they have a mental illness, where do they go? Because there's so many different places, so where's the right door? So, one of the things that we're doing is creating in the county what we refer to as a hub. And that's a partnership with a lot of the different organizations to come into one place, kind of one known, safe place to present, and then we can help them navigate the system. Some of their care is going to be delivered right there, and that's where they'll get their care. If they need something beyond what's happened in that, happening in that location, we can refer them to one of the other dozens of agencies here in the county. The other good thing about the project, and one of the exciting things about the project, is we're partnering with physical medicine to be in that location. So, the Piedmont Group is going to be with us in that location, bringing a lot of the physical medicine components. So, when somebody comes to that location, they're evaluated for their mental health needs, and they're evaluated for their physical medicine needs, and to make sure those two things are working together. So, if somebody's being treated for diabetes and they also have a mental illness, let's make sure that we're doing that in concert with each other to take care of the person, and also just make it easier for them. They know one place to go, they can get all their healthcare needs met at that place. So, that's one of the initiatives that we're really pursuing in all of our counties, but Iredell is, we've got two of them going so far. We've got one in Lincoln County and one in Burke County. Iredell is the next county that's coming up, and it's really homegrown. Burke is different from Lincoln, and Iredell will be different from either one of those because it's driven by the community. It's driven by what the providers and what the stakeholders in the community say they want it to be. So, we're, we're doing that. That will come online hopefully shortly after the first of the year here in the county. As we continue to look at, you know, kind of where we're going, you know, there, there's a lot of push at the state level to move towards contracting with, with large out-of-state agencies to do what we do. You've probably heard and read about the Medicaid Transformation Bill that was just passed this last legislative session. And what the state's doing through that bill is trying to say, you know, we, we fix the Medicaid spend on the behavioral health piece by doing what they did with us. They got their savings, they got budget predictability, but they haven't fixed the physical medicine piece yet. And that's, if you look at the pie of Medicaid, you know, behavioral health is just a small piece. You know, you look at long-term care, pharmaceutical costs, inpatient care, nursing homes, that's where the big dollars are. So, they're moving to do with that part of the pie the same thing they've done with us. Our, our hope is that we don't get lost in that shuffle because of the success that we've had and their desire to take care of that other piece of the, of the problem, that they don't lose the, the gains that we've made here locally. And by that, I mean, one of the, one of the parts of the state's plan is to contract with three statewide organizations. And you could think of somebody like Blue Cross Blue Shield in North Carolina, but also think about United out-of-state or Optum out-of-state, some of these out-of-state national managed care companies to come in and manage all of Medicaid across North Carolina. What we think that does do is, is go back to the hub discussions when we're talking with the Health Department Director, when we're talking to the DSS Director, when we're talking to local law enforcement and the local CEOs of hospitals. I don't think that that happens when you're managing out of Dallas, Texas, or when you're managing out of Tampa, Florida. I think that happens when you're here. So, we hope that that doesn't get lost, and that's part of what we hope, that the legislature can hear from other local leaders like Commissioners to say, let's don't lose what we've got that's working well in our local communities. An equally big challenge for us, and I'll come back to the funding. So, I mentioned that they took their savings off the top, and then we've had local savings, and Partners has been successful, and we've had a lot of local savings. So, we've built up our fund balance over the course of the last two and a half years and have plans that we're working on, like the hub development and like other things, to reinvest those savings locally. One of the things that the legislature did this past session is, is they were battling the budget between the House and the Senate, is they, they had a hole, they had a hole in the budget negotiations, and they needed money. So, they looked out at the eight of us and said, there's a lot of fund balance sitting out there if you look at those eight entities added together, and we need some of that to balance the state's budget. So, this year, they took $110 million away from our savings. It's the, again, the original plan was to have that savings and to reinvest at the local level to balance the state's budget on other parts. And next year, it's a two-year budget, it's a biannual budget. The second year, next year, they're going to take another $150 million out of our system. So, what that means for us locally, what that means for Partners is, this year, we're going to lose $15.4 million out of that savings, and potentially next year, $21-plus million out of that savings. So, that impacts our ability to do, well, first, there's just the overall fairness doctrine that's, you know, that we played by the rules that we were given, and we've done what we've done, and we've been successful, and now to change the rules, you know, we can argue from a fairness standpoint. But just more importantly, locally, and what that means for us and our ability to do things with our local communities, that, that's a huge financial impact to that. So, we hope that, again, locally and collaboratively with, with local leaders, including Commissioners, that we can advocate for that to be changed. Don't know that we're going to, obviously, we're not going to change it for this first year because it's there and the budget's already been approved, but when this short session comes around and the legislature starts to tweak with the second year of the budget, we hope that we're successful in, in having this be a one-time thing rather than, than a two-year problem. So, those are just some of the things, again, that we're working on. When, when we look at some of the things you'll continue to hear about us and likely to read in next year's annual report, some big initiatives for us are, are they continue to work with the integration of care between behavioral healthcare and physical medicine? A lot of work going on with Departments of Social Services, particularly around the children that are in foster care, and the trauma that they've experienced to try to stop that cycle of kids needing, you know, more and more care, and just making sure that those partnerships at the local level work. And thirdly, just trying to better develop a system of outcome measurement. You know, it's, it's easy for, for, for people to talk to you about, you know, what happens when you put money in, in physical medicine, and let's say if I was an operator of a neonatal care unit, I could tell you like what the money did in terms of the increased birth weight of the babies and the, and the reduction in infant mortality and, and the successful pregnancies. But for behavioral health, it's kind of hard to say, what are the outcomes? Everybody knows when it doesn't work, when something happens at an elementary school or a movie theater and something gets national attention. Everybody knows when it's, when it's a bad thing, but it's hard to share or hard to quantify the success of the system, and that's, that's one of our projects this next year, is to really figure out a way to, to measure that in such a way to present to policymakers why it's important to continue the funding. So, that's all I have, but I'm glad to take questions and give you whatever else information that you might want.
Questions, Mr. Melton? I'd just like to mention that, you know, a large percentage of our jail population Right. or the people that enter into the judicial system either have substance abuse problems or they are flat-out mentally ill.
True.
And through the process of de-institutionalization in the 60s and 70s, we've ended up with most of that population cared for or housed
Right.
in our local jails, which they were not designed to deal with.
Right.
And it's my understanding that the hub operation, part of that is designed to be able to work with local law enforcement in terms of identifying people who are, have mental illness and understanding how to interact with them and then being able to divert them into services to treat that as opposed to just getting into the judicial system. Is that correct?
True. One of the things that, there's a program that we train on called Crisis Intervention Training, where it's designed, it's a 40-hour program to train law enforcement on how to deal with the, with the population that we're talking about. Not only for the safety of the officer, but for the safety of the individual that they encounter, that they don't know what's going on and why they're different. Yeah, we've been very successful, Partners is, in launching that program and getting buy-in from local law enforcement jurisdictions, partly because one of the champions of that that helped bring it to our area is, is a gentleman by the name of Captain Knife out of the Shelby Police Department. And he was involved in an officer shooting where he killed somebody years ago. And it's one of those stories that made the 2020 program, so he's on the 2020 program and talks about, if I would have known then what I know now, it would have gone down different. So, that's, that's an opportunity for us to work with local law enforcement to help, help educate them and, and serve the individuals of the county better and more efficiently. One of the things that happens in, in talking about the hub and some of the things One of the things that happens, and talking about the hub and some of the things that are going to happen there, is, is that will have a law enforcement presence. So what happens now if a law enforcement officer picks up somebody and they have to go to the emergency department, sometimes they get stuck there for hours or days, waiting on that evaluation to happen. With the hub, there'll be the opportunity for the officer to go to that location, transfer custody to an officer there, and then get back out on the street, so that that officer that's paid for with his saved funds that I mentioned earlier can, can sit with that patient while they're evaluated, and then we can get them to treatment, and, and as, as opposed to sitting in a jail or sitting in an emergency department.
Well, it sounds like a, a great program. We'll be interested to hear about the number of people and the services rendered and the outcomes delivered, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
In terms of the annual report, it would also, I think, be helpful to us as a county to understand our slice of the pie
Sure.
in terms of the number, number treated, the outcomes, the, the sources for the funding as it relates to Iredell County.
Sure.
Just so we can...
I can tell you, just, just, you know, I mentioned earlier about 28,000 consumers served in total, and another 11 and a half or so served for the state funds. Iredell County, 3,400 Iredell County consumers were served Medicaid-funded, and 1,400 were state-funded. So about 4,800 consumers were served out of that, that population that I gave to you earlier.
Thank you. And I, and I would like to commend you for the investment you've made of an individual working directly with our Department of Social Services,
Sure.
because the, the limited time that he's been there
Yep.
has already paid off in terms of being able to identify funding streams that would be available to deal with their issue, which DSS is not necessarily aware of or
Right.
deal with on a daily basis. So that inter-agency collaboration
Right.
is producing a more efficient and effective operation, and one that is ultimately delivering services to our need, to the population that needs it.
I agree. Thank you, thank you for that feedback. And we had a meeting with the DSS leadership last week, and that's, they've mentioned the same thing, and we're, we're continuing to look to see, how can we expand that partnership with them?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Milton.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you all very much.
Now move on to the administrative matters on the consent agenda. If, Mr. Smith, with the exception of the animal control ordinance, would you please summarize those three matters?
Yes, sir. First was a request from the Tax Administration to appoint Laura Stroud as Deputy Tax Collector, a request from the Health Department for permission to write off uncollected patient accounts, a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to approve the purchase of 49.47 acres located on Dietz Road, adjacent to Surtoma slash Jennings Park, a request from the Finance Department for approval of, of and a signature on two-year lease renewal for the USDA Farm Service, a request from Tax Administration for approval of the refunds and releases, and a request for approval of the October 23rd and November 3rd minutes.
Thank you. Any comments? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as summarized by Mr. Smith?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And now move to item A under Section 8 Administrative Matters, a request from Animal Services to approve, propose, to approve proposed revisions to the Iredell County Animal Control Ordinance. Mr. Brad Gates.
Good evening. I brought with me Field Supervisor Terry Somnitz. If you have any questions related, she's, she's out there dealing with the, the mean streets every day, so if you have questions related to the specifics of animal control, she's here to, to answer those. I also want to thank the commissioners and everybody that participated in the September meeting, and all those who have participated in this process, including the Health Department, for getting us this far along, and trying to find that delicate balance between personal freedoms and the needs of the public safety. So when this was tabled at the September meeting, you all asked for a committee to be appointed, and a committee was appointed by, by the commissioners, and that committee was made up of Commissioners Johnson and, and Bowles, as well as myself and Public Health Director Jane Murray, and there were six, I'd call them passionate, but highly knowledgeable members of the public were in that committee. Prior to that committee meeting, Commissioners Johnson and Bowles met with, with Jane Murray and myself on a conference call that we had with the State Public Health Vet, where we discussed several of the matters that were brought up, including hybrid animals, primates, and the like, just to give them a direct information on those animals, and what the needs of the public health were on those animals. So on October 22nd, the appointed committee met to discuss the items that we seem to be pretty far apart on as far as the public view went, and that meeting went surprisingly well. We discussed items, we discussed all the items that we couldn't find an immediate settlement on, and the items that we discussed primarily were, were the exotics, and also some things related to animal cruelty. And on the exotics, we first discussed primates. After much discussion, there was a motion made by, by Mr. Lowry to grandfather in the current primates living in Iredell, in Iredell County, with no new primates being allowed in the county after the sunset period. This was approved by the group unanimously. There was another motion made to charge a registration fee for these animals, and to have a violation for first offense on these animals. Registration fee was to be a $100 initial registration fee, followed by a $50 annual registration fee, with the violation being set at $500, so that it would be more likely that you'd want to register your animals than to receive a fine for your animals. Finally, there was a motion by Doug Holland to require the primate owners to have a $500,000 liability insurance to cover the medical expenses for a victim, should there be a bite on a human by a primate, and that was also approved by that committee unanimously. We moved on and discussed hybrid animals, wolf-dog hybrids, coyote-dog hybrids, hybrid cats with, with North African wild cats. There was a motion made to, to have the owners of those animals meet the same requirements for registration as we had discussed with primates, and then there was a motion made to set the fees and liability requirements the same as for the primates, and that was, that was voted unanimously to the group. We moved on, and we, we discussed the large constricting snakes, which would be the snakes over eight feet up to our current limit of 10 feet for snakes in the county. Again, there was a motion made with similar stipulations, the same stipulations for snakes over eight feet to have the same registration requirements and, as the, as the primates. So we had other discussion, we had discussion on feral cat colonies, but we didn't find any resolution on that, and we can address that further down the road because that was going to be new to what we were, had been discussing. We had some discussion previously on, on what was a companion animal, we've changed that to household pet. We had discussion to allow the definition of a household pet to stand. There was a motion on that, and that motion passed with, with opposition of only one. Then we had discussion on cruelty, as far as leaving animals in vehicles. The state, the state does have rules on leaving animals in the vehicles, and we fairly echoed that rule within the ordinance, but we made a clarification based on a clarification the state also has. There was a motion by Doug Holland, and seconded by Keith Loudermilk, to exempt livestock from that section, as is provided in the North Carolina General Statute, and that motion passed with one opposition and one abstention. So we made, we made a lot of progress there, and it was decided at the end that everything that we had discussed would be put into a usable format, using everything that we had agreed upon, and that would be the final outcome of the ordinance, and those things were added into the ordinance as it appears with you today.
Are there any comments from board members? Solicited some comments from both of our committee members.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would speak to that. A lot of work went into this particular ordinance. I mean, it was, it was input from, from both sides of the spectrum, and, and then we had staff caught in the middle of it, trying to create a document that we can enforce. This board is tasked with trying to recognize and preserve pet owners' rights, and balance that with public safety. And I feel like that it has, I feel like that it has accomplished that for now. Now, maybe it needs a little tweaking, but there again, we're going to try and see how it works, and take it out for a test ride, and, you know, a couple of years or whatever, maybe we found that there's a flaw in it, I don't know. But nevertheless, though, it was, it was educational for me to understand that the state vet informed us, now this is the public health state vet, informed us that the macaques, for their ability to carry this herpes B virus, they don't even have these things at the zoos because they feel like it's that big of an issue. And so I am sympathetic to those folks who have those animals, but at the same time, golly, that's, that's, that's a lot of responsibility for that animal. But we have been considerate on that, and we have been able to preserve George, so, but George Jr.'s off the radar screen, but George right now has a home, so, but it has been very educational. I'll tell you what, I've never researched anything quite as extensively on the internet as I have this particular piece of legislation, but I think it's a document that shows that our willingness to try to be fair with folks, but there again, our stance to not compromise on, on people's safety. So, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it at this particular point.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, as I said earlier in the meeting, I do have what I think is a considerable libertarian streak. That streak became somewhat tempered during the, an educational process in the development of this ordinance, or the amendments that we came back with, and, and one of them was on the macaque monkeys. I, like Commissioner Bowles, I, after we talked to a state vet, I did a considerable, prior to that and afterwards, I did a considerable amount of research on that myself, and I did amend my position as, as far as the monkeys. I, I don't, I still don't have the heart to take away somebody's pet, but I do think there is an, I've been convinced there is an inherent risk associated with those animals for the contraction of hepatitis B, and I think that risk is significant enough that there should be a sunset clause for those animals once they pass. I, I don't think that they, that we ought to allow replacement of those animals. I, I came to understand that there are a, a number of other viruses that, that they can transmit, that are difficult to isolate and diagnose, and it's a long process, and some of the viruses are very debilitating to the folks who catch them. So even if they don't get herpes B, they can contract some other things and go through quite a spell of, of ill health. So I did modify my position on that. As far as the hybrids are concerned, I, I am respectful of, of the staff position until the state vet tells them that, that the rabies vaccination is, they're convinced is 100% effective, then they, they can't go out on that limb. And I know we got two staff members of different opinion on that, so unable to, to split the difference on that one. We, we did allow the continuation, continued ownership of, of some hybrids with some regulations and some fees associated in, and these fees do reflect the approximate cost of our animal control folks as far as the administration of these regulations. So that's kind, that's pretty much how we, how we arrived where we are. As far as the feral cats, I brought those up, and it became, prior to me bringing it up, it came, became pretty apparent to me that we were never going to rise to the consensus on that thing. We'd probably asked enough of those folks already, and we'd certainly asked enough of our staff, so we backed off on that. But, Mr. Gates, I'm going to ask one more service of you, the gentleman in Morpho that we talked about, if you could give him a call or have one of your staff folks and make him where we are, looking at him, we'll revisit it before too long. I think he's a...
Absolutely.
I think he's got a valid concern there, and there are some mitigating circumstances associated with that. But as it stands right now, I believe we have someone's going to, going to address some concerns in a moment, but as it stands right now, I'm in support of the ordinance as presented. And again, I want to thank Mr. Gates and Ms. Murray for their participation, and, and I found them to be very cooperative and very understanding. It has been consistent over the years, when speaking of animal control, that the primary focus has to be on, on the public health and the public safety. Secondly, has to come the staff. The staff inheriting that job, they do place themselves at some degree of risk in protecting us, our well-being, and I thank them for that. And the third, of course, is the well-being of the animals, and I think that this ordinance strikes that balance very adequately, and I thank everyone for their participation. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment?
Certainly.
I just want the public to know that this ordinance is, if, if, if passed tonight, will become our new animal control ordinance, and it will govern how animal control operates. But when a bite takes place, there are other rules that come into play, and that if a bite takes place, you, you got to research through the Health Department, Animal Control as to what you do next, that doesn't address when a bite takes place. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? We do have, thank you, Mr. Gates, and we do have one or two in the audience that although this isn't a public hearing, in the spirit of giving everyone an opportunity to relate their feelings on this matter, I will open it up for a three-minute comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this particular time?
Mr. Chairman, if they do, can I ask that we, this, make sure that we understand, this isn't the public comment period about just whatever you want?
No.
It should be, it should be limited to only those
Yep.
provisions, specific provisions that were in the animal control ordinance, so...
The public comment period has some ads on there. Okay. All right. If you'll come forward, if you'll please state your name for the record. Mr. Land?
Yeah.
We've got you down for the public comment period, that's the general comment period, that's later in the agenda.
Please, okay.
So I'll, I'll recognize you all at that time. This is specifically related to the animal control ordinance.
Hi, my name is Chris Leclair. By now, you guys are probably very familiar with me. I had a number of concerns about the animal control ordinance, but as it was pointed out earlier in the pre-agenda meeting, some of those concerns are already in the current ordinance and appear to have been slipped in under the radar in years past, so I'm going to focus on the ones that do. So I'm going to focus on the ones that do, or that I do still have a concern with. I don't have a concern with the licensing or the containment requirements of the wolf hybrids or any of the hybrid animals. However, the inspection provision states that the animal control officer has the ability to inspect the enclosure at any reasonable period of time without any advance notice, and animal control ordinance does not trump a person's reasonable expectation of privacy. Whether you're animal control or a private citizen, if you show up on somebody's property uninvited, unannounced, you're probably going to get escorted off, and that's the same with my property or a number of people that I know. So I would recommend changing that provision at some point, because I don't think 24 hours notice that somebody's going to be visiting your property is unreasonable. I've got a number of concerns about the definition of what's an exotic animal and what's a house pet. It's very vague. There's a lot of generalities made, so it leaves too much up to the determination of an animal control officer who is not trained in species identification, and as the director of animal control even noted himself, that unless a person admits that their animal is a hybrid, and they admit where that animal came from, there's really no way they can determine whether an animal is a wolf hybrid, as the genetic test is unreliable and takes way too long. So I worry that, as we noted, this is the tip of an iceberg, but I worry that we're opening up more problems than we're solving because we're creating legislation that we can't really enforce unless a person willingly submits to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Is there any further discussion? Anyone else wishes to be heard? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the proposed provisions of the Iredal County Animal Control Ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I might get motion.
Motion duly made by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I would like to personally thank Commissioners Johnson and Bowles for taking the time to meet with concerned and educated, highly educated members of the public who brought to the table passionately held views, sometimes in opposition, but that were able to work through those and achieve, you know, the sweet spot, the 80% solution that everyone could support. And as Commissioner Bowles has said, this ordinance is out for a test drive. We'll see how the provisions play out in reality and adjust from there as needed. It's always subject to revision by this board.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the thank you for saying thank you. If you really want to indicate your sincerity in your thanks, the next time you can assign Mr. Robertson and Mr. Norman as such a duty.
We will consider that to be on a rotational duty.
Thank you, sir.
And I would like to thank our animal control staff and Director Gates for the considerable amount of time and research that they've put in and the deft way in which they enforce the regulations that we have had. And I think this board, and I speak for myself, and I think the rest of the board, feels comfortable in terms of putting into his and his staff's hands the execution of this because we know that their intent is first to educate people about what the law is and why the requirements are there, and then to progressively, you know, bring to bear the enforcement mechanisms as opposed to immediately going to the most extreme enforcement mechanisms. So that's been his style of engagement with the public, and we appreciate that, and we know that that will continue, and that's why we have a warm and fuzzy about giving you the authority to be able to execute this new revised ordinance. So thank you very much. Now move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have two appointments opened up for the Iredal County Board of Health. We have a recommendation for Dr. Robert Monson II and Lance Demaree have both agreed to continue serving. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we reappoint Dr. Robert Monson and Lance Demaris, Demaree, how was that? Lance will forgive me for butchering his name, but nevertheless, I have served with these two gentlemen for a short time, but both of them seem to be very capable and very confident in what they do.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We also have one appointment for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Pat Smith has volunteered to serve in that capacity. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to appoint Pat Smith.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, we have one appointment to the Historic Properties Commission where Anthony Ross has volunteered to serve.
Nominate Anthony Ross?
And motion to nominate Anthony Ross and appoint him to the Historic Properties Commission by Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll move on to Item 11, Unfinished Business, and our monthly inmate reduction report from our deputy county manager, Beth Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Circulating before you is an amended report. I noticed an error sitting in the back of the room, so I ran downstairs, corrected it. So the one that's coming before you is the amended report for the month of October. As is usual and customary, a report is the second meeting of every month. We have two efforts that are ongoing. One is a jail bailiff position that is county-funded that we have added as of the month of October, or started in February. But for the month of October, they processed 12 new inmates and saved 449 days in the jail. And I've equated the savings to those days at $70 a day. The county-funded ADA position for the month of October processed 32 new inmates, and the savings in days is 778. So as I've stated before, both of those positions have accumulated enough savings in the days reduced in the jail to pay for themselves. So that has been...
Pay many times over, it looks like.
Correct, absolutely. Add below on the front page is just a running total for your charts, and on the back is, as I usually do, a running total with the population of the jail with your jail capacity. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Jones? None, thank you very much. Appreciate the time and effort you take to coordinate and crunch the numbers. Very informative. Now move on to the monthly public comment period on Item 12 of the agenda. Two individuals that are signed up for public comment, and I would remind you that each of you has a three-minute time limit, if you please. Mr. Dale Ladd?
You may not even scratch the surface on this, but you...
Well, I expect James Ladd will pick up where you leave on, right?
Nine through 12, nine through 12, right here, you could rest half of the animal farmers in the county here just on that right there because the animals, you're not aware of it, but the animals are being fed sulfuric acid through toxic byproduct feeds, and it's depleting the vitamins, minerals out of their body. Their mitochondria cell is damaged, they're starving to death, and in every case, food and drug and all, and our farm has been rampled by doctor after doctor on it. In every case, they come back with our good corn silage and hay and stuff, we shouldn't have had no problem. But in every case, we had high levels of sulfur tested in that feed, and it's also in the dog feed. Person after person has talked to us about their dogs. We told them how to treat their dogs. I treated my own daughter and son-in-law's dog that was going blind and everything, and I told them after we found this out, I said, "Your dog's going to have problems." And when the vet couldn't see it, I went and treated it just like I treated the cows. When they took it to the vet, the next one to come in that evening, it could see it was walking around just fine. They're laying there in a polio condition dying, just like the children you're seeing on television there. Their mother's feeding them, they just wiggle one hand. These children are being poisoned by food that's being processed with sulfuric acid. And the younger you are, the quicker that damage is done. And if a mother is eating that, the fetus is damaged before it's ever born. It's proof after proof on our farm. And it's nothing, what Jim Dickel said on Dairy Today right there, the very first line, just like y'all put on, the very first line is a chemical contaminant in the feed right there is terrorism. And that's what I've been telling food and drug and Agriculture Department, all of them, that the people that poisoned our cows, which it'd be about a dozen of them all together, should be pulling a 20-year sentence for terrorizing a food-producing facility. They should be pulling 12 years for the cruelest inhumane death that you could put on an animal, and the farmers with no way of knowing that this stuff was coming in their feed and farm after farm is coming to us asking what to do because the veterinarians won't talk and tell them. They're scared to. The veterinarians have been told not to talk in this case. And our case was blowed by one of Eli Lilly's research doctors because he was told to pull out of it because if our case had been proved, it would shut all the wet milling and the billion-dollar companies down across the United States, and the insurance company's saying they're not going to pay. So you've got nothing here in the law. The Agriculture Department won't enforce it. Steve Trucks, all the rest of them there, they ain't going to bet animal cruelty and obstructing justice because they won't come forward with the charges on this, they know.
Okay, Mr. Ladd, you finished your three minutes, and thank you again. And James Ladd? Please state your address for the record.
I, 21 Fox Hunter Road, Harmony.
Thank you.
These tests, I've been told by the doctors that you cannot prove sulfur toxicity, although it causes heart failure, respiratory failure, kidney damage, and these blood tests, and it does neurological nerve damage, it causes diabetes. When the mitochondria cell, the biggest powerhouse cell in your body, human body, animal body, is damaged, you're going to come down with diabetes. That's the start of it. And not everybody knows humans have problems regulating their glucose or sugar, and it's about impossible to regulate it on animals. And these animals are looking malnarys and starved down, and I've seen it in horses, cows, dogs, cats, and people are being arrested and their name tarnished because of contaminated feed. The state veterinarian told me sometimes it pays not to get too smart. When I told him I was going to shire off and change clothes and we'd come down there and shut State College down and tell the kids not to waste their money because they didn't need to know nothing, he had the backpedal. It's a serious problem, and when I had to say hello three different times to 12 FDA doctors to see if they were still on the line in a conference call, they did not want to talk, and they had an attorney on line with them, and none of them spoke up and said that I was wrong. Now, I've been told we raise serious eyebrows in NCDAs. Well, I want to pluck some eyebrows out because this big corporations is ruling the country now, and our politicians and our veterinarians, FDA, USDA, and all of them seem like they're scared to answer questions. I was supposed to have a conference with some research scientists, doctors, and they hadn't set the meeting yet. I'm still waiting on them.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd.
Thank you all.
You know, I know that you all have taken advantage of using this forum to share your experiences and your frustrations in terms of dealing with this issue. And of course, as we've mentioned, the correct jurisdiction for dealing with this issue is with the Department of Agriculture or perhaps the Department of Natural Resources. It's unfortunate that it appears because there's no one else that has raised the issue or taken advantage of, you know, this public forum with similar experiences with their herds. And so obviously, it appears to be some kind of localized event, and so I hope that, and I hope that, you know, that you're able to get to the root of it, and I appreciate your time. So thank you very much.
Can I make another little comment? Before anybody is charged with animal cruelty, I think the vet of the county's choice should take a blood test of the animal to see if it's health-related starvation or whether it's just not had no food at all. Because when you're buying food and feeding your animal and it's starving to death, you need to be convicted because some corporation wanted to make 10 million profit. Think about it.
Thank you very much. Moving on, county manager's report, Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, sir. Very quickly, last week, Commissioner Bowles and Chairman Mallory and myself, along with Matthew Todd, met with a couple representatives of the town of Mooresville just to talk about the ETJ issue. Can't say we came away with any firm conclusions, but we did agree that the staffs were going to get together, talk about the issue some more, and the town manager agreed to take back to his board the idea of maybe changing the annexation policy. So we'll wait to see if that bears fruit. But in the meantime, the staffs will work together to see if we can't come up with some way to make the process a little easier, inform the public better, and also take a look at some big-picture areas that maybe do need to get some consideration. An example, the Cornelius Road area, you know, where investment is being made in utilities and roads and such. So it was a good meeting, and we'll keep you posted on what we hear from this point on.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any new business? Hearing none. We have no closed session this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Adjourn.